Yeah, I'm going to start the meeting then. We have the minutes. Thank you, Bill. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Williams Lynch? Counselor Lynch?
Yes.
And Dan Riss says yes. Minutes are approved. Welcome, Mayor. Where are you? Oh, there you are. Do you have anything, Mayor? I'll unmute you to report other than what's on the agenda.
No.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public, there's a lot of you this evening. By council rule, you're allowed to speak now. It is not a question and answer period. It is mainly a time for you to make a statement about anything you'd like, hopefully pertaining to what's on the agenda this evening. After that, I'll ask you to go off video because it's distracting, and you're certainly welcome to listen after this evening. So if you want, if you know how to do it, there is a raise your hand symbol. You should do that now if you'd like to speak. Anyone? Hi, Joy. I'm asking public to speak now. If you don't want to speak, I'm not seeing any. Do you see any, Peg?
I do not.
I have two pages now. Since I have no one who wishes to speak public, I'd ask you all to please, unless you're a city official, remove your videos. I appreciate it. And you can listen and watch us. Or I can do it for you. Oh, Nora, you're at the library. Well, I don't know where Marge is, but at least Nora's here. I'm going to go to the first item on the agenda. $200 to supplement the FY 2020 City Council legal advertising budget. She told me she just needs a little bit more. Seems because we've had a lot of advertising. I don't know much other than that. Barbara said she'd join us, so I don't know how to respond, except it sounds like it is something we need to do. Peg or Bill, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, the only thing Barbara indicated to me was that because there has been so much activity, there's been a lot of need for advertisement of various and sundry meetings and things of that nature. And advertising has gone up a bit. So that was the need for adding additional money to the account, although she did not think we would certainly exceed the amount. She also didn't think we would get all the way to it, but it seemed like a good buffer.
It's not very much. Bill, do you have anything on this one? Any other members of the city officials on the $200? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Lynch?
Yes.
Counselor Riss votes yes. Next item, I'm glad dispatch is here, and the chief. Seems like end of year items, $42,000 for salaries, holiday salary, et cetera. Brenda's here. Do you want to say anything to this, Brenda?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The $42,000 supplemental that was put in for this year's dispatch. I guess they were end of year overages. Chief Modder, do you have anything on this either?
I have no, that's not my budget anymore.
Oh, it isn't? Oh. So Brenda, do you have anything on why this is necessary? Do you understand, Brenda? Maybe I got the wrong person.
Dan, I can speak to it.
No, thank you, chief.
Oh, chief, thank you. I didn't see your hand.
No, that's okay. Good evening. So this supplemental is an overage for the so this budget request is an overage, and there was some lag time with the 911 grant, which there is every year. So this is going to appropriate both training and overtime for Brenda's dispatch budget. And as we were just approved, and this past week, actually, we were finally approved for the not for approved, we actually got the appropriation from the 911 grant. So this will be in combination to take us through the rest of the year with the 911 grant. This was a shortfall in the 911 grant and the overage.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Any questions for the chief, for Counselor Lynch or Counselor Coniff? Counselor Lynch?
Yeah, chief, you just said that this was to supplement the 911 grant. So now that we've got the 911 grant, do we need this full amount?
No, it's a combination of the two, counselor. It's this is the offset of the 911 grant. So the 911 grant, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it was it might have been 60,000. So this 40,000 or 48,000 appropriation makes the rest of the budget year for dispatch whole.
Okay.
We would have appropriated more than the, was it 48,000, Counselor Riss? I'm sorry.
42.
42,000. So it would have been more than the 42,000 had we not had the 911 grant appropriation itself. So the appropriation and the 911 grant makes dispatch whole through the rest of the year.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Coniff, anything?
No.
Does the mayor, Val, or Jen have anything on this that they want to add? No? Shake your heads. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve 42,000 to catch up on dispatch areas, salaries. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Lynch?
Yes.
Counselor Riss votes yes. Okay. Next item up is the budget. Nora, thank you for joining us. I'm going to share a screen now, and I'll ask Counselor Coniff to watch video for people asking questions.
I'm good, thank you.
So Nora, this is the library's budget, as you can see here. The only question I have is the salary line. Can you just explain that, the wages line?
Sure. Yeah, that's, we have, I think it's an equivalent of 6.8 FTE at the library, and it's going up from the previous fiscal year, mainly because of the minimum wage requirements. Eight of our 12 employees receive minimum wage, and that's a larger, it's on that, I forget, 15 to over five years. So it'll be up to $15, I think, in 2022. So this is the next increment in that movement toward that.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, the city appropriation request was 378, and the total given is 378. I don't have any other questions. Counselors Lynch or Counselor Coniff?
Yes, I got one.
Okay.
He's good. Peg's talking. I think she's on mute. Peg, you're on mute.
You're off mute, Peg.
I know. It's a good time for all of you for a couple of seconds. The question I have, and I'll essentially have it of all of the department heads, is as we go through the remainder of this year and into next year, are there, do you, and I think the answer actually is, I don't know, which is if we have staffing for the library and the library is effectively closed, do we anticipate going forward that if there are, if the library remains closed for an excessive amount of time, what happens to this money that is not spent? And maybe that's just an overarching funding question, financial question, as we go through this uncertainty over the next whatever? And what happens to money that is left unspent, I guess, is my question.
Sure. I think our case is going to be very different from all the other departments because we're only receiving, we're not actually receiving 378,000 from the city. We asked for 378,000. We're receiving, as you can see up the top, 213,000. So we're not going to have a problem spending the city money because it only makes about half of our total budget. So for us, it's going to be a matter of trying to find the other 200,000 to pay staff and do everything else that we need to do.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, Nora. I appreciate it.
Counselor Lynch?
Thank you. The only question I had is on the budget. It's under miscellaneous. Goes from 500 each year to 2,000.
Sure. We began a campaign, and we probably won't end up spending it this year, where we were doing, investing more in fundraising. And so we had essentially been spending the money and not really reflecting it in our budget. And so this change from the 500 to the 2,000 is a reflection that we were actually budgeting about 1,500 in various fundraising efforts, annual ask letters, things like that, postage.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the mayor on this?
Yes. So Nora actually mentioned it already. So I, I don't know if it was last year, for the last couple of years, Nora and I have been talking about the library budget. Most cities, so the $213,000 that Nora has mentioned is almost a pass-through from the state based on a formula. And Nora, if I'm going sideways on this, please step in. But the library is not a department of the city. We do a pass-through on what the state gives the library, which is $213,000 this year. It doesn't go up a lot at all. I think it's very important for our city to understand what it really takes to run the library. And that's why I've asked Nora to really kind of paint the full picture so folks don't think that everything that goes on at the library happens for $213,000 because Nora lives and breathes it. It doesn't. And trying to slowly build up that budget past just the the minimum amount that we get from the state and how we can do it. You know, this year is very different, and I hope to honor my best promises to get, I think there's a very appropriate place for some of our host community agreement money in the library, given the education and program they do for youth, including teens. We're, of course, going to, like every other part of the budget, take a look in the fall and see what we can do. But, you know, a forward goal, you know, for this budget on the city part, you know, looking to increase the community amount. And I don't know, Nora, I'm not sure if I remember this percent, but most communities do the base amount from the state and then add as much as 10%, but the average is 2.5%. I don't, I don't know if those numbers are still current.
So I do, I want to correct you on one thing. The 213,000 is not actually coming from the state. It's coming from the city coffers. The money that gets passed through to the library from the city is, there's a line five down on the budget there, or six, where it says "Library Material Chapter 78." That's the state aid money that gets sent to the city, and then I run invoices against that. The 213,000 is actually coming from you folks from the city as part of our contract, I guess, would be a way to say it. Other towns, yeah, there's a requirement, it's called a materials appropriate, municipal appropriation requirement, I'm sorry. And that is that the state, in order to be able to continue to receive that Chapter 78 money, the municipality must guarantee an increase of what works out to be about 1.25%. They take the average of the previous three years appropriation, add them together, and then increase that by 2%, which works out to about a 1.25% increase for the year.
Great, thank you. Great. So the 213 is by a formula? It allows then the library to get the Chapter 78?
Yes. Yes, that's it.
Thank you.
Any other counselors who are here who would like to ask a question about the library budget? Peg, you see anybody? Okay, then.
Dan, Detective Peak has a question.
Tom, go ahead.
Sure. Sorry if I missed this. I'm just curious. How are you guys foreseeing? I know that you also receive some money usually as a contribution from Williston. Do you anticipate that money being level, or?
That, we don't actually get that money from Williston Northampton School. It goes to the city, and I believe the city gives it to us as part of that $213,000. And I'm not sure, I know Val, I think, and the mayor have been sort of going back and forth with Williston about that 10,000. I don't know what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are they giving it to us to call?
So the gift from Williston is exactly that. It's a gift. It's not a part of a contract. And we did get a gift. We passed that through to the library. I am not sure. I have a meeting with with Williston next week with the CFO and also the headmaster to talk about what the coming year looks like as far as that.
Okay.
Any other questions from any counselor?
Val has a question. Counselor Riss?
I just wanted to let you know, Mayor, we have not received this year's money yet.
Okay.
That's the 2020 fiscal year money. We haven't gotten that either?
Not yet.
And I will remind people strongly that that is a gift, and there is no agreement that guarantees that amount.
I think for budgeting purposes, it would be wise for them to let us know if this year's 10,000 is not coming soon. Wouldn't that be helpful for you guys?
I mean, anybody who's giving the city money, and they can tell us that they are, that would be helpful. But it's a gift.
I understand. I just thought maybe we would like to know, since we've used it every year.
Yeah, I mean.
Not much it can do.
No.
All right. I have nothing else on the library. I'm ready to move on. Counselors Coniff? So I forgot to ask a little bit of business for our finance committee members and the members of the finance team. I would like to have a meeting on the 27th of this month. I don't know if I'm getting any new appropriations or transfers, but I would like that meeting to be the meeting in which we vote, rather than have a very long meeting on the 21st. I'd like your feelings on that, Counselors Coniff and Lynch.
So on the 27th, we would vote as a subcommittee, and then on the 3rd of June and/or possibly the 17th of June, we would do the final full council votes?
That's correct. And on the 27th, I would invite department heads back. If any of the counselors let me know that they would like them back, and that also to answer the questions that, for instance, had Department of Public Works. But I'd like to do it on the 27th instead of the 21st. I've already put the Zoom meeting in.
I have no current plans for these messages.
You okay with that, Mayor?
I'm fine and available.
Val, Jen, are you available on the 27th?
I'd be.
Okay. Bill, I haven't heard from you, but I assume you're okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I had a concert that night, but I think it's canceled.
Concert? In the backyard?
No, it's, I'm good.
So Nora, we'll let you know if we need you, but thank you very much. We're going to move on to the public safety budget. I'm going to try and find it in my thing here.
Thank you, Nora.
No, that's not it. Classified. It must be this one. Okay, where are we going?
Chair Riss?
Yes?
Can I ask a clarifying question about the 27th?
Yes.
should all department heads be at that meeting, or only department heads? You're going to let them know because maybe a counselor has a question.
A counselor has a question, or if counselors indicate to me they may want to reduce the budget in some way, I would like them there to, and I'm hoping to know that ahead of time so we don't have them all come if they don't have to. Wait until the 21st to ask that question. I'm going to move on to public safety budget, and I would like the chiefs to go ahead. I'll start with the police chief for the police department first to give us an overview of your budget and your goals, et cetera, rather than us go through all of the narrative. It's very well-written, though, Chief Alberti. Thank you very much. So you have any general comments, in other words?
Yeah, I'll say a couple of things. I won't belabor the 10-page narrative there for your reading pleasure. Thank you to the council, the mayor, Jen and her finance team, and Val and her audit team, and of course Cindy, and my budget team for our prep work and our budget request for this year. Clearly, we're facing some financial difficulties.
I don't see you. I'm sorry. I don't see you, and I don't know what's wrong with my...
Can you hear me, though?
Yeah, you off video?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, Peg.
Go to page two, Dan.
I can't do that with a shared screen.
Then you'll just have to listen to his loping tones.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you, Peg. So anyways, as I was saying, that clearly, there's going to be some financial constraints with our budget netflix. I will say that our police budget is significantly impacted for FY 20 compared to our requested. We understand that. We understand the reasons why. The police typically are problem solvers, as we know. So we're going to do the best we can within the parameters of the budget that we have before us. Some of the highlights out of my narrative are calls for service. Over 18,000, which is 1,000 more calls than 2018, and 2,000 more calls in 2017. So we're certainly busy, not in this moment in time, clearly, with the COVID crisis and the pandemic. Folks are, for the most part, doing what they're supposed to be doing, staying home. So that's driving our call volume down to a degree. Although with the nice weather and people spending entirely too much time at home, some of our calls are increasing. We're going to, certainly, these lean times, our very popular community outreach programs are still going to be a priority for us in our bridge building with the community. Our detectives have not slowed down, that's for sure. You know, we're still going to continue, as we can, higher down the road, to continue our workforce diversity. With the COVID, I think the counselor to Madam President's question earlier with regard to the remaining budget of this year and what happens to those funds. So in my particular budget case, in the last two months, we've reduced overtime to almost next to nothing as I'm running skeleton shifts to try to keep my people safe and healthy. So I don't, I'm running a skeleton shift, and I don't have a minimum mandatory in my police contract. So I have the ability to restructure and do some creative things to keep my folks home to some degree, healthy, and just to try to drive down associated contacts with the community. This is the training, we're in the this point in time during the year is when we do all of our training, all of our mandatory training. And we're not doing next to any training whatsoever, except for we're doing online training. So we're doing some in-service, which is mandated online, but to the degree of the state reopening and letting more than 10 people get together and train. So I have a training overtime line item that really hasn't been used where I normally would have already pretty much expended it by now. And again, we've restructured a couple of times during this pandemic. But the objective is to keep my personnel safe, which in turn certainly will keep the community safe. So to your president, to your question, Madam President, that money will be turned back into the city, which in my understanding, and I defer to the financial experts, Val and Jen, those monies will then go back into the general fund, which would be accessed from my FY 20 budget. Outside of that, I don't have any cruisers in the budget, but, you know, we appropriate one every year. We try to. Our average cruisers right now, our cruisers have an average of over 80,000 miles on them. That's an average. So certainly, we'll be looking for that in FY, at least one in FY 21. But I'm not optimistic based on some of the budget numbers and state aid and all the above. So that is, in a nutshell, what I wanted to highlight from my narrative. So I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay, chief, we'll go on to the
Dan?
Yes, Jen has a question. Sorry.
It's actually not a question. It's just a comment because I want to point it out. On the screen that we're looking at right now, under the second section, where it said, the second gray section, it says, yep, like FY Budget 2021, and it's got the highlighted 2,582,392.
Yeah, that's me asking questions.
Oh, no, no, and that's fine. But the number beneath that, 43,630, is wrong.
Right.
The two don't add up to the bottom line. The bottom line figure is correct. Just the supplies and service figure is wrong, exactly.
Could it be 92,160?
Gosh, 90,160, I believe.
Thank you. Yes.
Then that'll be corrected and reposted.
Correct, correct. But the 2,667,552 is the total.
Okay.
And to that end, Dan, if I may.
Yes?
You already have it highlighted, but you can see the police officer at 987,771. And it jumps to my total, 1.8. See the 1,836?
Yep.
So that two, that number should actually be 996,000. So that's a total. That 1.8 is a total. That's my entire budget.
So this line, which is what I was going to ask a question, I'm sorry. Don't understand why it's doing that. This line. I got to get out of here. The line that you have, 1,836,390, is incorrect?
Yeah, that's a total of my personnel services. So that's actually a that number is only correct in that that's a total of my personnel services. That number.
What it should be on that line is 987,771, or what is that actual line, Jen? Under police officer right here, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong.
Nope, that's, I know exactly what you are referring to. I just have to pull up the personnel spreadsheet. The problem is, is that the GL, what do you call it, subtotals it or totals it all as one full-time salary account. So that's why it pulls in like that. If you give me one second, I can tell you the total of that one.
Jen, I have it if you.
If you have it, then go ahead. I just haven't got it yet.
It's 996,065.
Okay, I'm going to ask Jen if you would resubmit this particular page of the budget to the finance committee, just so they have it on record. I trust that the numbers are correct, but it ought to be edited, I would think. Okay?
Yes, absolutely.
I have a comment on, that was one of my questions. I have a comment on the chief of police and a question. Obviously, you got a well-deserved increase because you have a new contract, correct?
That's correct, counselor.
Now, that's a five-year contract. Am I correct?
It's a three-year contract with what they would refer to as a two-year arm.
Does this have increases built into the contract, or are you paying this amount every year?
It has an increase built in every year.
Okay. Is that like a cost of living or something?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Well, I can say this for a fact, that that catches us somewhat up to what other chiefs are getting. And considering the responsibilities on your shoulders, I certainly feel it's warranted. I just wanted to make that comment. But so the public knows, that is an increase in your salary, which is trying to, I'm sure the mayor can make a comment on it, is trying to catch us up to where chiefs of police are in the valley for communities like us, or in the state, actually.
Thank you, Hal.
I feel it's certainly appropriate. I don't know, Mayor, do you want to bring up anything on that or make a comment on that? The 111?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I was muted. It's a contractual obligation. It does start to bring up our public safety. It does start to bring up our public safety, our, our police chief and, and really across the board looking to, to increase those, um, uh, salaries to be more competitive and, you know, while I'm not wishing. Yeah, it's, it gets us closer and I, and that's true across, across the board, uh, across all salary increases, whether they're contracted or, or not, that we just need to step it up, which.
My next question, Bob, is the overtime, uh, your level funded, is that, what happened? Well, obviously we have to put a supplemental in, but I'm just curious, when is that overtime used? Is that like for court, court assignments and things like that?
So that particular line item is used for shift overtime. So it's used for, um, shift supplementation when officers are on any earned time. Um, and it's used for, uh, call-ins, uh, if an officer, if officers have to get called in due to an emergency. Uh, but the bulk of that is, um, for replacing officers when other officers use their earned time.
Okay.
It's a contractual obligation, um, and I don't see specials highlighted, but, um.
No, I only highlighted things that I wanted to question, I'm sorry.
I understand. So this, so the overtime, um, contractually, there's only certain instances that I can use special police officers, which are less than half the rate of a, a full-time police officer. So that then drives, um, that drives most of the overtime and that's really shift overtime.
Okay, the last question I have is incentive, you got level funded, uh, is that contractual?
Yeah, and it's really, although, although you say it's level funded, the, the actual level funding with contractual increases and raises this year is, um, actually my requested is the level funding. Um, so we're gonna have to, um, most likely, um, the nice thing about this particular matter is the last payment for the incentives for the police officers is in, uh, June. So by the time we get to next June, I may be in front of you for an appropriation and, uh.
Catch up on that line.
Yeah, I'll catch up on that line item and hopefully, uh, things are somewhat stabilized by then.
Okay, that's all my questions, Counselor Lynch.
Thank you. Um, Chief, uh, looking at what we did last year and, and what was budgeted, uh, for 2020.
Yep.
I recall you came to us asking for about, I think it was like $60,000 appropriation to offset payroll.
Yep.
For contractual obligations we had, right?
Yes, um, so I can explain that, Counselor Lynch. We had, uh, that particularly last year, we had raises built into our contract. Uh, those raises, um, although were requested, were omitted in the con, in the, um, in the requested budget. So, once that was recognized, I had to come back before the council for that $60,000 shortfall in the, in the raises. Um, so it was legitimately missed, um, or not put into the finalized budget. Um, so that's why I had to come back before you, so that's why these numbers, these numbers are, are very accurate, um, in the personal services line item, uh, for what we're gonna need, because my officers are getting a one and a half percent increase in July and that's built into this budget. So essentially what happened last, last year is that, uh, 1.5 wasn't built, it wasn't in the budget, so we had to come back and, and reappropriate it.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this budget of 2020, the 2,550, that includes the 60,000 that we appropriated, or no?
That 60,000, yes, it is. That 60,000 that you appropriated was now, is, was used for this year's contractual obligation and it currently is built in now to this one, so you won't see me for the raise, if that's the question.
I just want to make sure, because if I layer 60,000 onto it, then, you know, we're, we're, we're called about 33,000 and I just want to make sure that we're good.
I suspect you'll see me for a bunch of other things, but that won't be one of them, counselor.
Jen has a question or an answer?
Yes, um, actually, this, the line that we're, the column we're looking at that says budget 2020, um, Bill does not include adjusted budget, which means any appropriation that he went, that was done over the course of 2020 was not, is not listed here. This is the original budget column as it showed in last year's budget.
Okay, that was my fear, so thank. So really, we're, we're under, what we truly need, or what we budgeted last year was 2,610,000 with that 60,000 layered on top of it, so now we're looking at 2,577 is what he's got, so it's 33,000 less than last year, which, uh, are we losing somebody? I guess would be my, my concern in that regards.
So I can, I can, I can speak to, I can speak to some of that, um, if I may.
Certainly.
With, with my requested 2021 budget, my requested 21, 2021 budget was a, uh, a true representation of a level funded budget, uh, plus contractual obligations. Uh, to that end, um, the budget that I'm getting, uh, currently, um, is, so from my line items, by way of example, from my, from all of my line items, if you total them all up, it's 102,112 dollars, um, less than what my requested is. In addition to that number, um, I'm gonna have some other contractual obligations that aren't built into the budget that again, um, you know, praying that, um, the money's coming to the city, um, as we're all hoping they will. We're gonna have, I'll have some appropriations, there's no doubt that I'm gonna have some appropriations in this budget to get through. However, um, what we are doing is one of the positions that I have a retirement coming up, one of those positions, where that one position, um, will not be backfilled, um, currently. Uh, we're keeping the position, uh, but it will not be backfilled. If that, so we're not laying anybody off, fortunately, um, we have a retirement that we're not filling in lieu of having to lay somebody off.
Okay, thank you, and that was actually gonna be my next question, was on retirements. There's nothing budgeted for unused buyback or anything, um, so we're gonna have to do an appropriation for that. I know in years past, when we know people are retiring, uh, we budget for that, um, so, so that's gonna be.
And it's, and I'm, and I'm sure, um, uh, Chief, Chief Modern knows well, as he's, uh, one of those going out for retire, retirement. It's hard to say, in, in years past, it's been difficult to budget for retirements because I've had situations where I've got an officer who says he's gonna retire, uh, is gonna go through the process and then decides in the 11th hour he's not gonna retire. And now we're into the budget year, so I don't have, I don't have the money budgeted or vice versa. Now, I don't have the money budgeted and I'm gonna retire now in, in 30 days or 60 days and that money certainly isn't budgeted, so it's an unexpected appropriation, uh, but it's a contractual obligation.
Just so everybody knows, he's not talking about himself, he's not allowed to retire.
No, I, I understand it's contractual and I, I totally agree and I, I understand, I just, uh, you know, it's, it's nice to know these things ahead of time so that we can, for it, so if we know somebody's coming, that's something that we need to keep in the back of our head, that's gotta come.
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Lynch. Counselor, in the future. Public Safety Committee last night had me gone in 10 years.
Really? We'll have to speak to them. Counselor Gomez, what are you talking about? Anyway, I'm only kidding. Uh, Counselor Connaught, do you have any questions on this budget?
Um, just, uh, a couple of questions, and we may have spoken about it, um, on the incentive line. What are the incentives again, that that encompasses?
So the incentives, uh, again, a contractual obligation, uh, it's an incentive for, it's an education incentive, uh, for the police officers. So they get percentages, uh, based on their degree, based on their base pay.
And, and that's part of your contract?
Yeah. Yes.
And so if you requested 361,000 dollars and you got 300,000, where will that 61,000 be made up?
So that's what I was saying earlier, um, Counselor Connaught, that, that last payment for the incentive is paid in June of the fiscal year, so between now and, um, next June, the, the final payment's in June, so I'll still have that, I'll still have money in there, but it'll be approximately 60,000 dollars short in June. So as we get closer through the spring, I'll be looking at an appropriation for that potentially.
Okay, and this is kind of a, a nit, but last year you requested 26,000 dollars for uniform allowance, um, and that was underfunded, and so, uh, is this another situation where we're going in with 21,000 and it is likely that you may have to come back to us for more on the uniform allowance?
Um, if you're looking at the uniform allowance, so in this, at the bottom, Counselor, where it says uniform allowance at 21.
Yep.
So there's a, and I'll, uh, I may actually, um, tag Cindy in on this one, because the uniform allowance is also split into, um, expenses, there's a, there's a portion of uniform allowance that's put into expenses, uh, actually Val maybe will jump in on that too.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess the point is that.
I'm here.
That's not, okay, go ahead.
Hi, um, okay, uniform allowance, the 21,000 is what we pay the officers in July every year. That's their contractual amount that they get, so that's gonna be all used up. And then we usually ask for 5,000 dollars for uniform allowance in our expense budget. That takes care of miscellaneous expenses throughout the year.
And that was one thing that, um, so the five, thank you Cindy for reminding me. So the 5,000, uh, Madam President, was put into the budget, um, and I'll let, um, Jen jump in here, but it was, it was omitted, but I believe Jen is gonna put that back in, Jen?
Yes, that was completely an oversight, the line was just removed from the Excel spreadsheet. There's a lot of back and forth, you know, of me sending spreadsheets with my updates, getting spreadsheets back with additional updates and somewhere along the way, that particular account wasn't there. So there will be, I believe it's, uh, 5191, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that falls into the expense line. It, you won't see it here, because it's completely gone, but it'll be 5,000 dollars, so that will have to, that'll be an adjustment that we do. I'm sorry?
Will his budget reflect that and it, by going up?
The budget is, right, it will go up 5,000 dollars because of that, however, um, and I, I can't speak to this, I'd have to let the mayor speak to it, but I know there, because of the uncertainty surrounding, um, the coming revenues and, you know, how this COVID is gonna play out, you know, I know we're gonna revisit this all in the fall and there was, um, there was mention, we were talking about another item completely and, uh, it was talked about that maybe we wait and do all, all and any fixes to this budget, um, at once as an appropriation if, if that, you know, makes sense. So again, that, I can't, that's for the mayor to speak to, but yes, it, there, there should be 5,000 additional dollars in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
A misunderstanding, is there gonna be 5,000 because you're gonna reprint this, or are you going to, or is that something that, that we're gonna look for an additional appropriation maybe in the, in the coming months? What, what did you mean, Jen?
That will, that would depend on how the mayor wants to handle any changes to this budget.
So the 5,000, when we get a reprint of this, will, will be someplace in here, but zeroed out for now?
However, Mayor, however you want me to put it in there is how, how.
I'm not understanding, if we're missing something, I just like, the, the page has to be redone, so if there's something that should have been there, just do it, whether it's zeroed out for 21 or it's supposed to be there, I'd like to have that back.
Yes, the line item will be there, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the mayor will fund anything she can, when she can, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Uh, Peg, do you have anything else?
No, I, 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 I really need to speak this back so that I understand, because it's, it, it's not still clear to me. So today, I mean, I realize it's only 5,000 dollars, but, um, I think we need to be really clear. So today the budget is 2577,392 for those items. And what you're saying, Jen, is we're gonna add a line, uh, it'll say uniform expense or whatever it says, and there will be a 5,000 dollar, 5191 put in the third column and that will make 2577,392 go up by 5191 in the, in the budget that comes to city council, or are you saying that it, the line item won't go in there and it'll be zero and we appropriate at a later time?
Can I jump in for one second?
Please.
So the 5,000 dollar line item that they're discussing, Counselor, is actually below that, it's in expenses. So that, so right now the expense line item for that 5,000 says zero, uh, if it's even in there?
No, it's not in there.
Yeah, so it's not even in there, so that's, there'll be a line item in expenses that says uniforms and there will be 5,000 dollars in there.
So it'll be in this budget I'm circling here?
Exactly, correct, and I think, I think it's 5191.
Yes.
So 2667,552 will go up.
By 5,000.
5,191 dollars.
There you go, Counselor, yes.
I can do maths.
But, but just in, keeping with that, the thing is, is that that changes the entire budget because Val has to refigure revenue, so, you know, that's what, that was where my hesitation was on, it's 5,000 dollars, like, do we want to reinvent the wheel and redo all the revenue figures for it, or just?
I'm, I'm hap, I'm happy to say.
I'm gonna let Val come in, she was chomping at the bit to say something here.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to say that any changes to the budget means that the whole entire revenue estimates all have to be changed. Depending on what department is changed, perhaps the enterprise and directs will all need to be changed, if anything in DPW has changed, um, or the net school spending, uh, if anything that is charged back to the school has changed. So basically, anything that changes in the budget will require the whole budget to be all re-balanced and redone.
I'll speak for the police department in that, uh, I have no intention on, uh, creating any more work for anybody, particularly Val. Uh, so I'm happy to revisit this in the fall, uh, with appropriation to, to, to fund the line item that was just inadvertently omitted.
And also to be clear, Chief, at the time that you may or may not be incurring an additional uniform expense and since we can't tell for the future, you may not need to come back for, uh, an appropriation as well, I mean.
That's accurate as well, Counselor, uh, particularly, and I remind my personnel all the time that they have a uniform allowance for a reason.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Connaught, do you have anything else? I'm down on the expenses now, I didn't know, Bill, if you wanted to do anything on expenses, I have no questions on that.
Oh, I'm okay.
I have no questions on expenses now.
Do other counselors have any questions? Can you see them all, Peg?
Uh, Counselor Kuzinski does.
JP?
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I wanted to say thank you so much, I appreciate your comments about your officers, your concern for their, uh, their well-being and the well-being of all the citizens. In every interaction that I've happened to see, there was great physical distancing between the citizen and the police officer. It works, it's very hard work to keep everything under control and we appreciate all that you're doing there.
Thank you, Chief.
I also wanted to just ask a quick question because, uh, I'm not sure what we're, how the word you used to describe the 60,000 dollars that was originally requested, but then not budgeted for incentive, and then we had the discussion of the 5,000 dollars for uniforms. Is there anything else that's in your budget that we might anticipate or you might anticipate at this point, coming forward with a supplemental appropriation request in the future?
Well, there's a couple unknowns, Counselor, good question, there's a couple unknowns, um, certainly, and I can, I can get into some of them. The overtime investigative, um, is always an unknown, every single year, that's an unknown. God forbid, um, we have another homicide, um, that really blows that line item right out of the water. Training, we're trying to regulate the best we can, uh, we're actually doing, we're, we're doing some innovative, uh, stuff with our training, um, by way of, um, admin days versus overtime. So there, we're, and again, I, you know, obviously we all understand the budget process in, in trying to have a balanced budget and that, and that comes with some costs. and that, and that comes with some costs. We're gonna work very hard to do what we can to stay in these parameters. And as you well know, and I know the council well knows that I try very hard not to come back to the council for appropriations. So I, we're gonna work hard not to do that, counselor, but there are a couple things that I know that I'm gonna have to, and we've already named them. But as, you know, the overtime's an unknown. It always is. And, you know, we've, we've had overtime issues in the past. Officers get hurt, officers get sick, you know, we have to fill those beats. So the overtime is always very fluid, as is the investigative. And, and the last thing I'll say is the court time, which I didn't mention before when I was saying during COVID, we're saving a significant amount of overtime in FY20, courts are closed, arrests are down. So there's a significant savings in officers going to court in overtime. But that is also an unknown because, you know, my detectives have some pretty significant trials coming up that we know are gonna be significant trials in FY21, excuse me. So there may be some fluctuation in the court overtime as well. So I don't project coming before you too much, but we're gonna work hard at, at not having to do that, but I do foresee a couple instances where I'm not gonna have a choice.
Thank you. Is that all, JP?
Counselor Peak has a question.
Tom, go, go for it, Tom.
Yeah, thanks. It's not, I, I mean, it's not something just for, for the chief, but I think as we go around this and we are talking about these things that we might need to come back to in the fall. I, I just want everyone to kind of sit on this notion that we, we don't know what kind of money we're going to have in the fall. You know, like, like there's just a lot of uncertain things going on here. And I think that, you know, I understand that there's a reason why this is set up the way it is, but I also just think that we need, we need to sort of look at this stuff and, and maybe start building a list of things that are, that are, that, that we expect are gonna be coming. Because if there's something that's contractual obligation that comes forward and we're talking worst-case scenario, we don't have that money, we're in a lot of, we're in a lot of trouble. So I, I just am hoping that as we're looking through this and trying to make these difficult decisions, we can just stay aware of the fact that there's no guarantee that we're gonna have, you know, any given amount of money when it comes time for us to have this conversation again.
And it could potentially be worse. Great point, Counselor Peak.
Anyone else? Counselor Coniff?
Chief, I thought I heard you say, and I think you know it's music to my ears, you will not be getting another cruiser this year?
For FY20, the council has already appropriated and we've already heard that the hybrid cruiser. And the detective hybrid as well. So for FY21, I would put in, I would typically put in appropriation for one cruiser because I'm, I'm falling behind in my fleet as it comes to maintenance and mileage. Quite frankly, I should be putting appropriation for probably three cruisers. Because, you know, I, and again, I'm, you know, I'm losing an officer as it is. But I, you know, I have officers, but I need to, need them to get two calls. So as it stands right now, I do not have a budgeted cruiser. I put, I, and of course, I put one in my budget every year. But the crew, so I don't have a cruiser budgeted in FY21. However, depending on, to Counselor Peak's point, I certainly would like to be looking for an appropriation for a cruiser in FY21 as I do every year.
When do we get the hybrids?
I wanna say, I actually asked that question because I knew it was coming. So the cruiser hybrid is, is actually in process in Massachusetts. Actually, they asked me for decal-ing last week. I believe it's the 29th of this month, I believe it's coming. The hybrid Ford Escape is at the factory and the factory shut down, so we won't be seeing that anytime soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, did you wanna say something? I didn't know if you did. Never mind. Go ahead. Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, yes, I do. So on this particular, on the police budget, and you'll also see it on FIRE very purposely, and actually Chief Alberti was, was great in sharpening the pencil not once, but twice. And looking at those court services and the three overtime lines. I think it is important in this fiscal climate for, for a couple of reasons to go really tight. And I appreciate the chief doing that, you know, so willingly. I, I think he knew it was coming. What we're, we're forced is, I know that in municipal finance, going back to council, is a roll of the dice. And, and that's how it's looked at by city and town executives. I think in transparency and also accountability for department heads, which is a really big shift today. I'm sorry, a really big shift in this year. That the council and the public should know if we have to come back for money and what that is. Dollars are going to be tight is not a cliche. They're just not gonna be there. So when we're looking at needing more money or wanting more money for a particular item in the budget, there's going to be a real balance of, of what really need means. And, and I like the appropriation process. I also like the idea of, not, not to mention, I don't wanna go back out and have to repost a budget to do a bunch of appropriations with a lot of detail in the fall. And, and very candidly, there might be no request for an appropriation in the fall because we won't have money. You know, I can't say that enough. So what you're looking at right now is a pretty bare bones budget. We hit our contractual obligations mostly. We're rolling the dice on some stuff that we don't have to pay until June. And, you know, you didn't see it in Park and Rec and DPW as much because of the enterprise in DPW and also Park and Rec with having no summer activities. It was much easier and, and no, you know, you knew contracted, it was easier to, to really just cut Park and Rec down the way we did and not leave any room. And while the number is bigger in police and will be in FIRE, the contractual obligations are different. But the OT, I mean, we're playing off an early trend in this pandemic that we're hoping continues into the, the summer and into fiscal year 2021, that there's some decrease in activity. And again, I, every month, you're gonna get the report to review and we will not be surprised if we come back for anything in any department. And I say we, this is a budget process that I said to every department head, yep, we're cutting you back a lot. And if we have to go back to money, you know, for money and, and Counselor Rist and, and Counselor Coniff, Metta President Coniff, you know, like I've said a couple times already, that the appropriation of money sought by any department really will be accompanied strongly by me and not just with a piece of paper because this is my budget. And I'm, yeah, I'm gambling about, I'm, I'm hoping we can do this all and I could go on a little more, so I am, just a little bit more. I, I think that this budget, this expense budget is the, is the best thing to do for the city.
Okay. Counselor Lynch?
I just had another question for the chief and I apologize.
Which, which, which one of the budgets, expenses or salaries?
Pretty much either of his, his areas. We, we get drug money when, when big crime cases happen and everything else. Is there any lines in here? So we talked about incentives. I don't think that can be used for payroll. But on the, the equipment side and, and expense lines or anything like that, are we allowed to use any of that money towards anything in your budget at all?
So the federal, the federal rules on drug forfeiture are that you can't supplement a budget with that money. What you can do is you can purchase equipment that you normally wouldn't budget for or something above and beyond what would be in your budget. You could also use it, where I could use it to some degree, and I have in the past, and I most likely going to this coming year, is for narcotics investigations. I can use it towards overtime for, for drug work. That's one of the things that it's earmarked for. And I certainly have in capital expenditures that wouldn't normally be budgeted. I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've used out of our drug forfeiture accounts over the years to augment equipment that I would normally be putting into capital and asking the city for. And it's definitely hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years. But by way of example, we've, I could, I can, I could have, and we did, we've added a cruiser to the fleet that isn't, wouldn't be budgeted for, but I can't replace a cruiser in the fleet, if that makes sense. So I wouldn't be able to like just replace a cruiser with drug forfeiture, but I could add a cruiser, a number cruiser to the fleet. We had, we bought our truck through drug forfeiture because prior to buying that truck through drug forfeiture, we didn't have a truck. So it was something that would have been a capital expenditure that isn't budgeted for and we didn't already have to replace. So our truck came from drug forfeiture. So there are, and the, and the guidelines and the, and the laws around drug forfeiture are super strict. So I gotta be very careful how I spend that money. Can I answer how I spend that money? But again, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years we've used to, to equip the police department that we would have been coming in front of the city council for, not, not in front of the city council, but for capital expenditures.
Okay, I'd like to move on. We have a long night ahead of us. If that's all right with the counselors. Counselor Coniff and Lynch, I wanna go on to the crossing guards next.
Sure, thanks.
I think that's next. Crossing guards. There is a slight increase here. Can you explain that, Chief? Where I highlighted it?
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
Contractual or?
Not minimum wage, actually.
Oh, okay, that explains it. I knew it was easy. I have nothing else on crossing guards or detention. Do any of the other counselors have anything? Counselor Lynch or Counselor Coniff? I don't understand. Sometimes the thing format's funny.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Peg, go ahead. I'm muted.
At least on the version that I have. And, oh, maybe we're not there yet. Hang on. Yeah, we're not there yet. It's under animal control. Sorry.
I can move on to that unless there's any other questions on these two. I just wanna do the ones that I'm sharing. Crossing guards and detention. Nobody else?
Tom Peak.
Tom Peak?
Hey, we should have do something like a comments or something thing so that we can get people's attention more easily, but yeah. What happened to the crossing guards this last couple of months when the schools were not in session?
Great question. So in the, in the onset of the pandemic, we were continuing to pay them very much like several in the city were working from home, although they can't cross from home. Not knowing where this was headed, if they were coming right back, if the schools, the schools are doing so. But since then, they have not been being paid and we will have money certainly for the end of the year to put back to the general fund from the crossing guard account. Great question.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Okay. Animal control. Peg, you had a question on this? I don't know why it's doing this to me.
There you go.
There you go.
So I don't, I made myself a note that the numbers didn't look right. So you have $5,000 in salaries at the top. And then you have 12,500 in supplies and services for 17.5. But below, you have 10,000 in supplies and services for a grand total of 15,000. So is the number 17.5 or is the number 15? Jen? Sorry, Dean.
Fine, I.
The number is, the number is 15. It's, the original request from Chief was for the 12.5. And then one of the cuts that was made was to that line item. So it's the bottom section is the proper one. And then that 12.5 in that middle section is gonna be changed to 10.
Okay, thank you.
The bottom section is a breakout of the top section. Am I correct in saying that, Jen?
It should be, yes.
Okay, anything else, Peg, on animal control? Anybody on animal control? You see anybody, Peg? Okay, moving on. What's next? Dispatch. Is this its own budget now? I guess it is, right? So it's Brenda?
Yes, yes.
I, I used to be under the chief and I'm, because I've been here a while, I don't remember these changes. Brenda, do you wanna go over anything? That's kind of a general overview of the narrative at all?
Like Chief Alberti said, our dispatch center has been extremely busy now with the COVID-19. Call volume has gone down. I'm having one dispatcher as my best, working at a time to save, save on the budget. But call volume is down right now due to the COVID-19, but other than that, we're still answering a lot of calls from our cell phones and texting 911.
Okay, I see in your budget, I have it up, I have a highlight over dispatcher salaries. Is that a increase, cost of living, an increase that's due this year?
An increase due to the pay plan dispatcher got raises.
That's correct, that's correct. I remember this. Okay. I don't have any other questions on this budget. Counselor Coniff, do you have any questions on dispatch?
A couple. So above, Jen, Jen, I may be, I may be looking at the wrong thing. But in the above, you had 52,000 in salary and 267, 8, 268,000 in supplies and services. And then below, it looks like that money is in fact, is in fact salary related. So it may be that I just need to not look at the top and just look at the bottom. But I'm, I'm not clear why 268,000 is under supplies and services on the top.
I'll be honest, the, I just kept it this way because that's how it was in Melissa's budget. My thought was that the, I'm thinking that the dispatch supervisor is paid in a different way or under a different plan than the dispatchers. And that, that's why it's broken down that way. But if that's wrong, I can certainly, you know, rearrange it. I just, I'm assuming there was a reason. Val, I don't know if you know why it would have been broken down that way when Melissa did it?
I don't because they're all on the pay plan.
Yeah.
I guess I would have just thought, Jen, that 268, 763 and 52, 335 were salaries. And I would expect that most of it, some of it's probably supplies, that, that there would be more in the salaries line in the upper portion.
Right.
Me, I was not tracking on what supplies and services for 269,000 would be. But then I looked down below and it appears that it is salary. So it's confusing, I guess, is what I'm saying. We either need to not have that portion in the budget if it's not gonna be the number we need to be looking at. Because it, it's meaningless to put it under supplies and services if in fact it's salaries. So that was a little weird to me. Also, I'm curious around overtime. We have it set at 10,000. Is that a historical number that, or is it something that the contract, is there a contract that requires that? Or is that history telling you that you spend roughly $10,000 a year in overtime?
So the dispatch overtime, we've, it's a fixed number within the budget each year. But what's, what, what isn't reflected in the budget itself is the state 911 grant, which in FY21, between training and overtime, will be 50, over $55,000. So we will be using over $55,000 to augment that, certainly that line item for 10,000 because that certainly wouldn't be enough. in and of itself and training and equipment as well.
Okay. I, I was just going to ask about holiday pay. That is clearly throughout the year, I'm guessing, the additional, is it a, like a differential if you're working on Christmas that you would get paid some sort of a time and a half, double time? Is that what that line item is for?
It's calculated with the pay plan increase in salary.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
If I can make a comment on formatting, Jen? Try, I guess, to go over this when you have free time in the coming year. The top lines have been confusing. The top sections up, up here are a little confusing. And here I see this as a total here. Maybe break it out a little bit better so non-ac counting can figure out what's what. I believe though, when we're examining this budget, this bottom section is accurate, correct? This is confusing, but this is accurate.
Do you, so let me ask you this and, and just to put this out there, I inherited these.
I'm not, I'm not criticizing at all. I'm just saying it's room for improvement in the coming year.
Yes.
I like it because obviously we've run into this a couple of times.
Right. So I guess my question to you would be, provided it's accurate, is that middle section helpful to you? Or since it's really the same information as underneath, as long as I, you know, specify where the salaries total is and where the supplies and services total is, would you prefer to just see it like that?
I like the fact that this goes from 218 to 221. Down here it just starts at 220. So I think it is useful. But accurately reflect the totals down here. I believe these are, if you do anything, these should be totals. Because salaries doesn't just include the dispatcher's salary. Salaries to me would include everybody. So there's something going on here that seems a little confusing. All I'm asking is so that we can understand, these have to be, they kind of have to match the totals down here. If you have a total here of 317, you know, that should be here, I think.
Yes, yes. And in theory, that was the intention on most of them. This one was
Okay.
odd because it was.
I don't mean to. I just.
No, no.
Counselor Lynch, do you have any questions on this budget?
No, I'm good.
Any other counselors? You see any other pegs?
I don't see Tom Peak's hand, so that's good. I think that's it.
Somebody has it in for Tom Peak. I don't know.
He's the only one I can see. He stands out.
So Chief, I don't know if you'll be needed on the 27th, but that's when we're going to vote on all these. You're welcome to come.
I'd most likely.
If there's questions, if counselors have questions of the chief, you can email him and he will try to answer them by email, as the DPW did and Jen is doing. I'm going on to Chief Mader.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome. If you're up, just tell us all about the fire department and the narrative. And I want to thank you for your service before I forget to do that.
Thank you, Counselor. So this budget was in the 11 budgets I have done, quite possibly the worst. With a lot of unknowns. Lot of cuts. I submitted, when you look at the requested, I submitted bare bones with a lot of unknowns because the union was in contract negotiations. That was unknown. I didn't know what the final numbers are going to be, so I rolled the dice. You will like that the overtime budget is at $100,000. And that will hopefully remain a worst case scenario with the addition of the firefighters on a grant. The final budget given to me was a shock. The fire budget, I think, is one of the few that took a cut from this year's budget amount. If I, when I did a real quick look, I can tell you that whoever your next fire chief is, is not starting off on a good roll. I don't know the cost of the new contract. I was not involved with the mediation. So I don't know what the true numbers are. But I can tell you, your next fire chief is going to be in front of you a lot. Or we're going to be turning back a grant and laying off firefighters. I hate to do doom and gloom, but there, there's no other way to it. I'm glad this is not my budget to worry about after July 1st because it is a horror show. One of the things I, that you may notice, I've been asked a lot about since this budget was presented to council last week, that the deputy chief's position is not funded. That to me is disheartening. That position was just restored in December of 2018 after being vacant since 2009. It's a needed position that is going to impact operations hugely and impact public safety. The multifamily housing units, which we've tried many times to get done, had issues with building inspectors with free, excuse me, free time. Finally got a deputy chief, finally started getting into them. They're labor intensive. And now there's no deputy chiefs to carry that forward. The deputy chief serves as the emergency management director. Somebody else is going to have to pick that up. Deputy Henman was able to get a lot of grants through MEMA for stuff that we need that doesn't come out of the budget. So the numbers you see here reflect the cut. But the impact on operations and public safety, I think, is going to be huge. And I won't even go into the fact that if, with those numbers, I've already answered inquiry from FEMA. If that position is going to be funded because it's zero. And I told them it's not my budget and that's not my decision, but that could not only force us to lose the four positions and the grant, but also future grants and grants that we have pending. So I don't know what the plan is going forward. I, I've been out of a loop. But I can tell you, in my 11 years as chief, this is by far the worst. And 20 plus years with the department, this has the biggest negative impact. And I can tell you morale in here in the last week is in the toilet. So it's bittersweet that I leave, but I'm glad that I'm not going to be here to see this downward trend continue. It's very disheartening, this budget.
Mayor, I'd like you to respond.
Yeah, I would have loved to have Chief Mader more involved with the contract negotiations. He had a lot of days off and couldn't make them as well. When he was handed back the budget, his reply was basically, I have nothing to say because it'll be layoffs and cuts. So that's disheartening. In fact, the deputy chief position will be filled this year because contract negotiations with my selected candidates failed. I have talked to MEMA. It sounds like Chief Mader and I have had two different conversations as well as Senator Markey's office around waivers that will be coming around this particular grant. The grant was put in for 31 FTEs. That includes the command staff, the deputy chief position. And I've told both Chief Mader and deputy chief, and I am sorry for the bitterness that the chief is displaying. It's very unprofessional. I have told them that I am committed to fill that. And just like the DPW director, that position will be posted midsummer. There is a plan with HCA money as well as possible other grants to fill that position. There is, I thought it was important to keep the four firefighters to keep us in line with the grant. I expect to see waivers for MEMA on this grant, I'm sorry, on FEMA. And I continue talks with both FEMA and the Senator, Senator Markey who helped us get this grant. As far as what this grant looks like and, and morale, that is not the indication I get from rank and file. And that is of two days ago. And they too are disappointed with the chief.
All right, I'm going to stop this conversation. It's not doing us any good. Obviously a communication gap here. Moving forward, we've heard that there will be a fire deputy chief going forward. And that this budget will be reviewed, I'm sure, in the fall along with every other one. So let's move on. The counselors Connaughton and Lynch. If you have something specific, you can direct it maybe to the mayor more so than the chief, but either, it's up to you. So Counselor Connaughton?
Uh, no, just noting that the incentive of 120,000, is that, and I think, I'm guessing it's similar to the police, that is a contractual number? Is that part of the union contract or?
Yes, that's per the collective bargaining agreement. Much like the police, it's an educate, that, in the fire budget, it's an educational incentive.
And based on if they've got a degree or all of that kind of stuff?
Correct. An associate's degree or a bachelor's degree in fire science, emergency medicine or business, I believe is the other one that's allowed.
Okay.
And just like the police chief, I'm imagining that we'll be getting a supplemental peg because that incentive pay isn't getting, hitting us until June. And this is a way to kind of hopefully we could fund it. We're going to have to fund it because it's contractual. Anything else Peg?
No, thank you.
Phil?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the line with the deputy fire chief being blank. And it, I know we're looking to fill that position, which is great. And, and I think, you know, if, if there is any gamble with grants, I, I would like to protect any free money that we can get, obviously, but so, so are we not, that, that total line doesn't include any money there for a deputy chief? So what, how would that be funded? I'm just curious what, I, I might have missed it if you said it when you were talking, but could you elaborate on that one just for me? So I know where that money's.
The cannabis host community agreement money.
Okay, so that could be used for a deputy chief's salary?
Yeah. One of the, the buckets of the HCA money from INSA included public safety. And certainly as Chief Mader mentioned around inspection as well as reviewing the site plan would certainly qualify for restoring the deputy chief.
Okay, Phil, anything else?
No, that, that answers it. Thank you very much.
Other counselors on the fire department's main budget here? I want to see what's next. Ambulance is next. So just on this line here, expenses, et cetera. Nobody? I had a question, Chief. Radio, telephone, et cetera. It's up to 15,000. What does that fund? Is that new radios and stuff?
Uh, that covers cell phone bills. So there's a cell phone for the chief, the deputy chief, the fire prevention officer. There's one in each of the three ambulances. One in the engine. And those have data so that they can use the laptop through the phone. And that also pays for the code red system.
Okay. You got what you requested. Okay. Anybody else have questions on the expense part of his budget?
Yeah, I, I got some. I got a couple. The, the vehicle repair went up three grand. You know, I know we bought a new ambulance.
It went up two grand.
From 5,000 to 8,000. That's.
Well, I guess I'm reading the wrong one. I was reading this line here.
Vehicle, vehicle equipment repair.
5483, Counselor?
I think Dan was on the fire department budget and I think Bill was on the ambulance budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on fire, Bill.
Man, I thought you moved on. I'm sorry.
No, okay. So nothing on fire department? Thank you, JP. Tom?
Just a quick question for the mayor. In terms of the cannabis money, it, it's heartening to me that we might be able to use that to work on the, to, to, to work on the deputy chief position. Is the thought that there's other public safety uses that we might be able to, to use that money for? Or do we anticipate that that would eat up most of it?
So there is not, there, there is an amount that comes from, so right this year, it's, it's pretty easy to see where the money comes from. It's 788,000. It's from INSA. We created the stabilization account, but first it's certified as cash. The HCA for INSA describes the buckets. The money can be spent in, but doesn't assign, you know, a percent. It's, you know, not public safety is 30% or limited. So I, I feel with 788, not only isn't it appropriate expenditure for the HCA money, it is reasonable. And then the hope would be you're backfilling the deputy chief or in this case maybe chief. And then in 2022, we'll budget that in and restore the position or all positions fully.
And, and is that, I'm sorry, this is a little off topic, but I'm, I'm just interested in the context of how this relates to this, these kind of tough budgets. Are there like any real restrictions on, on what sort of public safety stuff we spend it on? Or is it just, you know, police, fire, ambulance, dispatch, et cetera?
I mean, certainly we would look at DPW because of the increased traffic because of INSA and could relate to some public expenditures that we did around One Ferry Street, or we were going to look at doing it One Ferry Street. You know, like we've said many times during this meeting, what happens in the fall and if that's the best use, you know, may, may change pretty dramatically.
Right. Okay. Well, yeah. And I'm sorry if I'm sort of taking this off topic, but since we keep coming back to this idea that we're doing this now, but there's going to be more work to do going into the fall and into the next spring and whatnot. I, it's just helpful for me to kind of understand what
Absolutely.
that we get to pull.
It's a great question, Counselor Peak. I forgot about that money. It's good to know that we can use it for certain things. I'm going to move on to the ambulance. I'm sorry, mayor?
I was just going to say, my plan right now for that money is to certainly use it for public safety as well as education. But, but I'd also just, when you're thinking about what's coming at you with the 788, I'm still looking to put some in stabilization. This will not be the only lean year that we're facing. So I, just to, I just want to bring that up.
Okay. Ambulance. Salaries are up a little bit. Is that contractual, Dave, I imagine?
Yeah, that's, so the salaries that come out of ambulance, there's no actual FTEs associated with ambulance. That covers the EMT incentive. It covers overtime directly related ambulance operations. And overtime that's used by the quality assurance committee to review every ambulance call we do and then correct trends and move things forward. So there's really no salary. It's just the incentive in overtime.
I see it here, right here. So Jen, this is another area where this says salaries and this says incentive. So again, it's a little confusing. If we could clean that up. Do you understand why I'm saying that? This says salaries here, line one. And down here we have incentive, which is what the chief just mentioned, is how that's driven up. I don't know. It's confusing. I know it's a combination because incentive is as part of the salaries. But that's all I'm saying, Jen.
Yep. The, the reason it's broken down in this case is if you notice the GL number is 51 at the end. That usually signifies that it's personnel, personnel service. So I just, you know, I mean, it technically is, it's not an expense. It's a personnel service cost.
So salaries and incentive, et cetera, whatever. Okay.
I can change it to salary. Personnel services.
For the general public, it's so you think that's money in your pocket, where it's incentive, that's all. It's a minor thing. I'm sorry I'm drawing on this. I have nothing else on ambulance, Counselor Connaughton?
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor Lynch?
Yeah, so I, I just had the vehicle equipment repair line question. So it went from 5,000 to 8,000 and we bought a new ambulance. So do, are we anticipating added issues and concerns shouldn't, are, are some of it?
So that ambulance is already this next month, I believe, will be two years old. So we have a 2010 chassis. 2,000 box ambulance is our oldest one. And we have a 2014. And all of these are well over 80,000 miles. I think this, looking at what I'm spending every year, the, the request for the increase was one less reason that the chief left to come back to council for repairs because ambulance repairs average, the first out ambulance goes through a set, set of tires a year. The second out ambulance probably. probably a year and a half to two years. Oil changes. Motor repair has changed the frequency that he changes oils, trying to prolong the life. So the cost for oil and filters has gone up. So that request is to reflect more accurately what the cost is to repair them.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all, Phil? Any counselors on ambulance budget? I don't see anybody. You see anybody Peg?
Nope.
Moving on, I think we have inspectors. And this is typical what we have. I know we have the building inspector. I'm sorry, this seems to. Is this under, is building inspectors under the, I don't know why my computer is doing this. There it is. Who deals with inspections? Is that you, Dave, or is that?
No, that's Joe Meswar.
I know. So he's, I guess he's not here, but can you have, just talk to me about this line right here, mayor? The building clerk. We added that position or we changed it a little bit, didn't we?
We did. Yeah. Yep. So we added hours there for Gabby to staff the office. When the inspector was out and about for better customer service, she knows we've had a lot of turnover in that office in the last year and she's the one who's been there longest and, you know, filing permits and she kind of jumpstarts the process, doing intakes and helping folks building, people who are doing building projects, what permits they'll need, what they won't, setting up appointments for the building inspectors, plumbing inspectors, so everyone knows where to go.
And that's important because we're catching up on a lot of inspections with the new system, with the commissioner. Having a clerk in the office means that, in my mind, the commissioner and the building inspectors can get out there more often. Correct?
Yes.
I have nothing else on the inspection services. I see Peg isn't there. Bill, do you have anything on the inspection services?
Yeah, just on the weights and measures line?
Yes.
Is that, is that somebody's salary that went up, I'm assuming, or is that something different? That went from 11 to 14,000 and they requested 11,000 and we gave them 14. So I'm not sure why it went up three grand.
That's contractual. Oh, sorry. That's contractual. And we found over the course, especially towards the end of the year, that we have more scales to measure and we need to do them more frequently. We contract with North Hampton to get that done. And with additional cannabis dispensaries coming online as well as deli scales that maybe restaurants have in the back when they're making, you know, sandwiches or whatnot, we've never inspected those. So I adjusted that up. And that will be reflected in the contract. It's about the amount of time that North Hampton spends here doing it.
Good information. Anything else, Phil?
Yeah. And the same with, the same conversation now on car allowance. So is that because they're gonna go out more? I mean, it went up 300 from what was requested. So I'm just looking at this, whoever built this budget requested X amount of money and we're giving them more. And I just wanted to know.
Yeah, Joe inherited this budget. Joe Meswar, our new guy, inherited. And so there were adjustments up weights and measure as well as car allowance. There are more projects in the city that are really kicking in and another one's about to start. So he's driving around also with the COVID-19 safety plans and compliance to the business attestation forms. We just anticipated, it's already stopped. He's driving around in his own car and he doesn't have access to a city car all the time. Sometimes he does, but a lot of driving.
Okay. And then the last one on books and periodicals. So every year, it's only budgeted 200 bucks. Some of the actuals were only, you know, $24, $134. And then this year, we went up to $1,200. So what was the $1,000 gain on that one?
To update the code books that we have in that office.
Okay. Are they, are they not up to code? I mean, are the codes actually inaccurate in the books? Is that why?
Yeah, they're just old. Yes, they're not accurate. They come with pocket parts to update. It's cumbersome. And if you lose a pocket part, which is like a handout, it's hard. The codes that are online are certainly helpful and I'm sure that's what we used in the past. But there, it says right on the website that this might not be, like, it's not the official official code book. So you need to order a hard copy.
Jen, did she answer that as much as you were going to? Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Conniff, do you have anything on the inspection services?
I do not.
Other counselors? Counselor Kozinski?
I just had a question. It's, why is this listed as car allowance versus in-state travel reimbursement?
That's a question for Val or Jen, I guess. Why is it car allowance? Val?
In the past, it was just the plumbing, the gas, and the three part-time inspectors were given car allowance and it's part of their, what they get paid. So the amount this year, it looked like was increased to add in the building inspector too. But part of their monthly stipend is a car allowance because they're driving around for inspections. So it's not in-state travel because it's part of their position.
Okay. So they don't bill for mileage. They just get a car allowance.
Exactly.
Anything else JP? All done? Okay. I believe that concludes public safety. I'm gonna move on unless my fellow counselors want to do anything else on public safety. Moving on, human services. Board of Health is first. Bree, are you still here?
I am.
So if you want to go over, you're having a, I know you're having a wonderful time this time of year. It's spring and God, you have nothing to do.
The public.
If you want to do an overview of the narrative and then we'll go into the numbers. I love this line. I love this. This tells us what diseases you're dealing with. That's scary.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's interesting because before COVID, nobody knew that we responded to 494 other communicable diseases. So I thought that was.
That is only one polio. I thought that was gone.
Yeah. So I would say, so last year, I believe, was my first full year here. So that was, it was good for me to get an idea of like where I was inspection wise and complaint wise because the previous year I was coming in halfway through. So we did 564 inspections, which is the most to date ever. And I mean, obviously with everything going on in East Hampton, we're seeing a lot of growth with food trucks and we have a couple additional camps that we have to permit. And so we updated our webpage. We've been more active on Facebook. We've, you know, updated all our applications. And I think we're just kind of a health department that's in the 21st century. So I'm pretty happy about where we're at. Obviously, what we're seeing is the growth and we're just, as you know, from last year, we're just falling extremely behind with food inspections, which in a place like East Hampton where, you know, it's a popular place to come to eat and to hang out. It's, I mean, it's really important for us to get, get on those. So.
I think it's interesting that you asked for 107, 179, and that's what you got. I don't know if there's any other department heads that can say that about their budget. So mayor did a good job by you, I guess. My question, anticipated Counselor Peak, mayor, post agreements, anything in cannabis can help us with the health inspections or no?
Maybe. Yeah. I mean, it's certainly a part of it, you know, with edibles and, I mean, we can speak to specifically what her interaction is. There's also a category or description in the HCAs that talk about public education.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the other reasons why we shifted the Health Youth Coalition grant into the Health Department in case there's any crossover of that work that we can just have a bigger impact.
Do you have any comment, Bree, on the numbers I have up now? They look what you wanted. So for the most part.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, obviously the big thing is the part-time inspector, which is extremely needed. And right now, through a grant, through DPH, I have money to pay, you know, an inspector right now. She's working about 10 to 15 hours a week for me, just responding to COVID complaints. And it has been a world of difference, not having to, you know, focus on complaints and inspections and being able to actually focus on COVID and doing, you know, bigger things and responding to, you know, you know, this convenience store is doing this, or, you know, my neighbor's doing that. Being able to just have an inspector go out and take care of that stuff is, has been huge. So the part-time inspector, their main goal is going to be to just be out in the field and doing food inspections, responding to complaints and helping out with that.
So you just said something, it's currently being grant funded? Am I, did I hear that?
That's just related to COVID. We received money through DPH when COVID hit. So it's, I think, we got two rounds of funding and we're already down to, we'll be out of it after probably this week.
So what happens? Is she not able to work until the new fiscal year? I'm misunderstanding.
Probably. Unless mayor wants to.
We have to lay off the part-time inspector after money's gone?
I would think so until July 1.
Mayor, that was a question for you. Do we have to, the part-time inspector's done after next week is what Bree's saying because we ran out of money or COVID money?
Yeah, we're gonna run out of the grant money. There's still COVID money that, that was appropriated by council to accounts in Bree. And we're certainly booking at that, you know, accessing that money for this. Yeah.
Well, I think it's, just to make a comment, I think it's a worthy, I know we don't have many positions we're adding and we can't afford them, but if we're gonna do anything, health inspection is a great, is something we ought to do, given the.
I agree. I agree.
So I'm certainly agreeable with this. Counselor Conniff, do you have any questions?
Well, my first question is, why is this format different than all the other ones we've seen?
Generally speaking, because the, I had to put this all together from home. And when I remote into my computer at work, because these files are so big, it keeps kicking me out. So to make, make it more expedient, this is, this is actually how I see the templates when, you know, when I have them and then they get prettied up for the budget. So the theory is, and I spoke to the mayor about this, this was to get the numbers out to you. These are the numbers, that type of thing. But it will, you know, they will all have the same format when it's a final budget posted.
And so the salary, so the FTE count, Bree or the mayor or Jen, is one. That's you, Jen, right? Or Bree. And then we have a part-time clerical or a clerical, which for all intents and purposes, looks like they're part-time. And then a part-time nurse that is, was that the position that is grant funded right now? I'm, I think there's a lot of conversations where people already know the answer, except I don't. It's missing some of the piece parts. So how many human beings will be in the Health Department today versus next fiscal year?
There will be, so there's one full-time person, which is me. There's a part-time admin, which is Jackie. She's 10 hours a week. The part-time nurse is five hours a week. So right now, we've got three. I've also got the animal inspector, which is a stipend position that's out of animal control. And then we will be adding a part-time health inspector.
Got it.
So we'll have, we'll go from three to four, but not three full-time to four full-time. But it's three humans to four humans.
Thank you. Okay. And that's, you know, sadly, it took a pandemic to get you some help. But, you know, here we are. This is the new world we're in. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
Counselor Lynch?
Yeah, I just, on education and training, every year, it's $350. We went up to 1,000. You see, there was no budget last year. So I'm just wondering where, where that thousand came from? Because in years past, it's only been $80, $30. It's been under 100 in years past. So 350 was a good threshold, but I'm just wondering if there was something there.
So every year, I budget for whatever licenses are up and whatever certificates are up. So I hold like between six different licenses and certificates. So some years, like one of my licenses is every two years. So next year, it will be less. And I also, so usually, and then I'll add a couple hundred for some of the trainings they put on. Each training I go to is between like 60 and 100. But especially with a new part-time health inspector, if we don't get somebody that's completely trained, we're gonna have to send them to trainings. And then we'll both have to go to trainings each year for just continuing education. So there's two reasons, I guess, it's higher.
I think it was zeroed out last year because it was in human personnel office. Am I correct, Jen? Is that where it was last year? We had moved everything there. Now we're moving them all back.
Got you.
Okay. Thank you.
And then.
All right. You have another one?
Just, just the only other thing on the part-time health inspector. So if, if that doesn't get funded from this, from the budget, would there, I know the grant ends in a week, but are there other means of finding, funding for that? Are there other grants that are gonna be coming up available that you know of? Is there anything that you can see in the near future? May it be COVID-related that are extensions of grants that are existing or anything like that? Do you know? Have you looked in any of that?
Not that I know of. The money that the state gave us was just two installments and it was, like I said, we've already blown through that. And in my six years of public health, there's never been a grant that has funded a health inspector. There's grants that fund emergency preparedness planners and I'm trying to think, there's, you know, there's stuff like that. But there's never been grants that have funded actual health inspectors or public health nurses. Sometimes grants will fund admins and stuff like that. But, but taking on a grant too creates extra work for me, which is, we, I mean, even with this part-time health inspector, I'm still gonna very much be in the field. So it's difficult to take on more right now while we're not even meeting our own mandates. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other counselors have questions on the health budget? Seeing now I'm moving on? Well, what is this? Okay, we're on to Brendan. Brendan, are you still here? I think Brendan's still here. I thought I saw him. There he is.
Yeah.
Want to say anything about, there's a long narrative? You can kind of summarize it and present your hopes for the future?
Oh, hopes for the future.
Whatever, whatever you want to say. Now is the time to say it. Then we'll go and get into the numbers. I love this particular statistic here. It tells us, is this all the seniors?
All the seniors that we've encountered, yeah.
Oh, that you've serviced. It may not be everybody, but it is.
No, just the people we serviced, yeah.
I just want everybody to know, I was one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
You were helpful with health insurance. I was scared about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. It's pretty scary stuff.
Anything you want to say about it before we get into the numbers?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I just really want to highlight uh what the outreach team has done. Uh, as you can see, uh, we've jumped up. Uh, we hit three hundred and seventeen unduplicated clients. Um, this is, you know, this goes beyond what most care advisors are dealing with at uh Highland Valley Elder Services. Um, and, you know, not all of them are uh, you know, consistent in coming in. But, you know, that's three hundred and seventeen people that we've served, East Hampton residents, um, that we've been able to provide services for, whether it range from Medicare, fuel assistance, SNAP benefits, uh, you name it. So I I'm just really proud of where our outreach team has landed. And um, I think we really uh did a spectacular job in in serving the elders in that way. So.
Okay, numbers-wise, it looks like you also got what you asked for. But hey, Jen? She's gone.
Oh.
So does anybody have, uh, one thing the other format gives me is what the budget was. And obviously, I could do some math, but hey, Jen, I'm asking the question. Can you tell me what the twenty twenty budget was for uh Council on Aging? Because I, or if you don't have that figure in front of you, because you're formatting on this particular line, like now, you you didn't did a total there. I want to take, if if you don't have it, it's okay. You're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yes, I do have it. And it, the original budget for Council on Aging for twenty twenty was one sixty-seven, five hundred.
So we're basically level funded, then?
Excepting of a hundred dollars, yes.
Okay, a little bit of increase in salaries. Okay, that's all I have. Um, thanks for all you do, Brendan. Thank you so much. The seniors are lucky to have you.
Well, thank you.
Have anything on this?
Yeah, thank you.
Bill, anything on the Council on Aging?
Uh, the only thing I had was uh professional services for twenty-seven hundred dollars. What falls under that line?
Uh, that's Xerox and Connecticut Business Systems. Uh, so I'm hoping, once this contract is done, uh, we can get rid of them and jump on uh the systems that are being used by Fifty Pace, because I've had a hell of a time with Xerox. Um, and and just dealing with also Connecticut Business Systems, which is their, they carry out all the maintenance and um orders. So it's, we're dealing with two different companies um for printer-related needs or copying needs. Uh, and, you know, we're just buying our time on the end of the contract, and then we'll probably get rid of it. Um, so uh, yeah, but it's it's stuff that I'll be discussing with Ashley and figuring out what we can do to improve that line item.
Thanks for the here.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'd say it's good to hear. I imagine that if we get on the same contract as Fifty Pace, and it might be cheaper or certainly more efficient.
Yeah, I I, and to be honest with you, when we ended up with um the Xerox and CBS, that was before I landed into the director's position. So I'm not sure where we deviated from the rest of uh the city. Uh, but I'd like to get away from it, because we've just had a horrible experience with Xerox. And, you know, I I, to be honest with you, I'm kind of done with them.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything else, sir?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Other councilors? Anybody on the Council on Aging's budget? I'm gonna move on. Veteran Services, uh, Mayor, I guess I'll have to ask you about Veteran Services, if there's any question.
Mike's on the line.
I was gonna say, I think Mike.
Oh, I don't, I didn't know that. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah.
How are you? It it's nice to be on the team. Um.
I'm gonna put you on video again.
Okay.
Well, I guess I don't have you on. I don't know how to do that.
I I did it, Ken.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
No problem.
There you go.
You want to say anything about Veteran Services before we look at numbers?
Um, I think the only thing Veteran Service-wise that I would be concerned with is the increase in funeral benefits in the next, you know, six or seven months, depending on how uh covid it works its way through the the senior veteran community. But other than that, I think um everything, everything else should be, should be good to go. No issues as far as the department goes.
So that's an interesting question, given the soldier's home situation. Um, are we required to provide funeral services for veterans through this budget? Or what's our requirement there?
From the veteran cash benefits of thirty-four hundred, um, the way the veteran benefit works for for um low-income veterans is they have to meet a certain asset threshold, and then Veteran Services pays up to four thousand dollars um for that funeral, seventy-five percent of which we get back from the state through the Chapter One Fifteen program.
Okay. Good. I, uh, I don't have any other questions. The numbers are here. Uh, we went down a little bit on veteran cash benefits, but that's related to population, is it not, Mike?
Um, it's hard to say, because coming into the department, um, I plan to do a lot more outreach. There's a lot of veterans who don't know about the Chapter One Fifteen program, so that may increase cost. Um, it it's hard to say going into the new year and being very new in the department.
Okay. Council Connet, any questions on veterans for Mike?
No. Thank you, Mike, for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Bill, anything on veterans?
No, um, agreed. Thank you uh for everything you're doing there. Um, what um, do, is this one of those ones we split between two, like South Hadley, I think it was, or Granby?
Yeah, South Hadley.
So we split the cost on everything, correct?
Yes.
All right. So so the uh really, the cost of all that is kind of split in half. The the does, I I I don't know. Do we take more than them in in some of these fields than, you know?
So the the part that is split is the professional and tech services and care and soldier and sailor. Um, the veteran cash.
Basically, salaries.
Oh, good.
What's split is salaries is split up, but this is all East Hampton, right?
Yes, the three hundred and forty thousand that's that's being asked for for the budget this year is purely south uh East Hampton.
Okay.
And we split the cost of your salaries for this, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that was, that was all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay, uh, any other councilors on Veteran Services? Okay, I guess we're done with Human Services. Uh, thank you, Ball. Uh, we will vote on this on the twenty-seventh. If you're needed, you will be told. Okay? So thank you, Brendan, Bree, and Mike for coming to the meeting and being patient. Lastly, we have unclassified. I don't know where that is. I may not have put it up. Let me find it. I apologize. Okay, so Val, this is probably all you or Jen in all of these discussions. But I noticed one thing I was very happy with was that thirty-two B health insurance didn't go up. I have it highlighted. That's amazing. How'd you manage that? Is the trust really in great shape?
So Dan, like, can I just, um, just to give like a little bit of an overview on this?
Sure, go for it.
Contributory retirement obviously is what is mandated by PRC. Um, Bob Dixon looked through the um the next one, two, three, four items, I think. I don't know. I'm seeing a lot of the same number right now. So there we go.
Sorry, I had a thought.
No, that's okay.
You're doing this.
That's okay. So, yeah, so Bob Dixon and I, you know, discussed uh the um workers comp, Medicare uh insurance, liability insurance. And then the um OPEB is based on our um financial policy, where we increase it by ten percent each year.
Okay, that answers my questions there. Okay.
And then the reserve fund and the unemployment, we just level fund. That's pretty much, it's my understanding that that's how it's been for a little while.
Go ahead.
Nope, no, I just, so I just wanted to clarify, like, kind of who had input for what portions of it, you know?
But just so the public knows, and anybody that doesn't know, the unclassified insurances that are school-related are all controlled by our staff, not up at the schools, correct? We we manage school-related insurances, et cetera. That's correct?
Yes.
Is that through Bob's office, or is it just basically through our budgeting process?
Um, I mean, it, let's, there's, there's pieces to the puzzle, you know what I mean? Like, my my department does payroll, so we have one, I have one person that does school payroll and one that does city payroll. Um, so, you know, any changes to school deductions and that sort of thing would be translated to my department from personnel uh based on, you know, their dealings with school department directly.
So when we look at school-related two million dollars to two point four eight, two million, I just want everybody out there in the public to know that there's a lot more to the school budget than just the money that's in the education budget. This is part of it, the cost of personnel. Um, and I I, again, I just want to ask, the fact that we're able to maintain our health insurance as a, a level-funded area, is that, is that something that might change because of covid? The thirty-two B insurances, or is?
Yeah, I will let uh Bob Dixon speak to. He was, he's the one that deals directly with the um health insurance company.
Bob, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, we got that word from the Hampshire County Trust um that everything was going to be level-funded issue. That was, that was good news, obviously.
Yeah.
And uh, so we, we would be able to reduce the budget down a little bit to basically level-funded. I had, I had put a two percent increase in there. Insurance is normally go up, well, we would be able to back that off a little bit. So that's uh where we came out uh kind of ahead of the game. How uh, how the insurance company is going to handle this uh coronavirus here, the covid? Uh, there's gotta be expenses going up someplace with this, this thing, uh, which is too bad. But uh, you know, the rest of.
It's really an unknown, I think I'm hearing from you.
What's that?
It's an unknown, really.
Yeah, it is. I mean, hopefully that uh it will get through the year without any big increases. I'm sure that at some point in time, I think we're gonna have to take a look at the thirty-two budgets, the thirty-two B budgets and stuff like that, and have to come back and take a second look at some of them. There's gotta be some costs here someplace. Uh, I think the Hampshire County Trust did a great job and they came in with the good news that we're level-funding everything. Co-pays are the same. Uh, this was really good. And then uh, we hit with this, this storm here coming up. So have to wait and see. But we don't know what it's gonna be. But I would expect at some point, just we have to come back for a supplemental somewhere along the line.
Okay. Council Connet, do you have any questions on our unclassified insurances, retirement counts?
I do not.
Bill, do you have anything on insurances and retirement? A lot of this is out of our hands. Thirty-two B, for instance, is all contractual, most of it, right? At least for the uh collective bargaining agreements, et cetera. So, so Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, the only question I have is on the OPEB uh contribution. Um, where did that fall last year? Because we see zero uh budgets or zero actuals in two thousand nineteen, or did, was it, is it brand-new in two thousand twenty?
Val?
Um, we used to always vote it um from pre-cash, but it was established. And then uh it was changed from a stabilization to a trust, so that we could meet regulations. And part of our um financial plan is that it will increase by ten percent each year, the contributions. So we started putting it in the budget so that it's taken care of, and we don't have to worry about voting it from pre-cash every year.
I do recall that, Val. Thank you. Tom Peak? I'm sorry, Bill. Let me just make sure. Bill, you have anything else?
Oh, go ahead. That's fine.
Tom?
I I ask this every time we talk about it. Uh, where do we stand on the OPEB stuff? Like, what's our timeline for for handling that stuff?
Unfunded mandate? Who wants to answer Tom's question? They're scared to answer, Tom. Val?
The actual OPEB is, we have a uh schedule that goes out thirty, thirty-two years. And the plan, it's part of our financial plan, to have it um, what they used to call the ARC, which doesn't exist anymore, but fully funded uh by a certain year and time. And so in order to do that, we increase it ten percent every year.
Okay, so.
If that makes sense. I mean, you know, they, they reanalyze it and um every couple of years, we get a new, you know, amount that needs to be funded. And and with this covid, frankly, uh, the stock market going down, our percent of funding is probably gonna go down because of the stock market. So, I mean, it's all unknown. But it's our financial policy to just put in ten percent more every year, so that uh by the time we get to, I think it's thirty-two, um, our, our part of the contribution is fully funded.
I remember that conversation.
Two oh three two, right?
Two thousand thirty-two, yes. JP, did you have something? No. Is that all, Tom? You're all set? Anybody else on this? Uh, I believe that concludes tonight's meeting. Am I correct, Council Connet?
I think that's it.
All right, I'm gonna um thank you all. We will convene again next May nineteenth. And that will be education, debt and interest. I'm assuming I'll, I'll try to reach out to Allison and make sure she's available for us. We didn't get our usual uh breakdown of the school budget. We have the numbers that are in the mayor's budget. I I don't know if we can get those, but does our finance committee members want those? I don't know.
Yes.
I can ask if they can give us something, but it's a fairly large document. Would you like me to?
Yeah, it's helpful.
Yeah, I think we should have it.
Okay. I will, I will send an email tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get something. But that meeting is the fourteenth, which is Monday, correct? Or Tuesday? Tuesday.
Well, I mean, it's gotta be done. They must have it. It must exist.
Mayor, are you still on, Mayor? I don't see her. I think she's done.
You know, she's here.
She's here.
Mayor, uh, do you know if Allison can give us a little more of a breakdown on the school budget before Monday or Tuesday?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It's digitized, so we can get a PDF?
Yes.
I'll ask her to send it to the whole council then, if she can, it's digitized. Well, thank you. I'm gonna reach out tomorrow morning then. All right. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Council Connet?
Oh, aye.
I could say, don't want to adjourn? Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Janice, aye. Thank you all. We'll see you uh next week.
Thanks.